The County Board of Commissioners meeting is now in session. Our Mayor Jeff Mason presiding.
Welcome to our February, I mean November, November meeting. It does. Before we go to prayer, as you all know, we've had a pretty tragic week this past week with several fires and lost lives, car wrecks and fires. So remember those families in our prayers tonight. Commissioner Gross was involved in a car wreck last week. He's still not 100 percent, so he texted me today that he wouldn't be here. So continue to remember him. And this time of year for holidays, it's remember our needy and our sick and shut-ins, especially on this cold weather. Mr. Joe Dinsen, would you lead the prayer?
Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this day and the many blessings you've given us all, Lord. We come to you with a heavy heart tonight. We pray for all those who are dealing with those things. We pray for the Ebbs family, the Massey family, everything they've been with. Just pray that you lift them up and bring them and just get them through these tough times, please, Lord, to be with Commissioner Gross as he heals. We pray you be with the lost, the sick, those in need, all those dealing with the loss of loved ones, Lord, that I haven't mentioned tonight. Lord, please be with us as we liberate and hopefully make you proud of everything we do, Lord. Thank you most of all for my salvation. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Yesterday was Veterans Day and we had our event was Sunday on the square. It was an awesome turnout. And I encourage anybody at home or here tonight next year to be there because it was a really good crowd, but it would bless my heart to see that whole square full. And to any and all veterans here tonight, we thank you. And Ms. Erica, our veteran, would she would listen, the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, Mason.
Shannon Green.
Here.
Lynn Reese.
Here.
Terry Givens.
Here.
Billy Bass.
Here.
Credit Kirby.
Here.
Jason Stewart.
Here.
Jimmy Waitfree.
Here.
Daniel Creutz.
Here.
Don Pascal.
Here.
Shannon Minchi.
Here.
Erica Eagle.
Here.
Ron Sheenak.
Here.
Ron Cowan.
Here.
Linda Nixon.
Here.
Toby McKinney.
Here.
Charles Kent.
Here.
Bill Reese.
Here.
Tommy Bannen.
Here.
Joey Nixon.
Here.
Dennis Hackett.
Here.
Dustin Delahaye. David Gross. Frank Woodard.
Here.
All right, pages one through eight are the minutes from the October 14th, Tennessee Court of Appeals. You've had time to go over those. I would take a motion for approval or any corrections.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by me. Second. I have a motion, I say it, I'd like to discuss it on the minute. If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll move on to number six, our announcements. Ms. Erica, would you like to give us your report for our fall cleanup day?
I came to the commission last month and talked about our fall cleanup day that we had for Keepsmouth County Beautiful. We had it out Monday, October 21st, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. We wanted to finish up before it started storming. We had around 40 volunteers, a lot of youth, which is a great thing because if they start getting in the habit of cleaning up litter and seeing all the stuff that's out there, maybe they won't do it. We picked up about 25 bags of trash and several large pieces of debris on Highway 53 near Walmart. We prepped beds at the schools for plant to promise with the Drug Coalition. We cleaned up litter on Upper Ferry Road and cleaned out the beds by the bridge in Carthage. We also collected several bags of cigarette butts, which are the number one trash that we have out there in Smith County right now. They're not biodegradable and they leach harmful chemicals back into the soil, so it's a big problem. The Drug Coalition and Health Department is sponsoring a contest until the 22nd of November, where you bring in bags of cigarette butts and they'll weigh them out for a prize. And if you're interested in that, the Coalition and Health Department have more details. Our next community cleanup day is going to be on Martin Luther King Junior Day, Monday, January 20th, 2020, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Chamber of Commerce. If you do breakfast and lunch, it's a good way to get those hours in if you need community service hours. It's a good service project for the different organizations throughout the community. And the Keepsmouth County Beautiful Committee meets every Friday, the last Friday of every month, at 7:30 at the Chamber of Commerce. But in December, we're going to be meeting December 13th, just because we wanted to avoid Christmas. So anybody is welcome to attend and we would love to have y'all help out, so thank you.
In our announcements, there is also on pages nine through 14, a letter from Dr. Roger Duke expressing his resignation and his interest in getting the vacancy left on this part of the national. Item number seven, I would take a motion to add that under the performance of appointing that vacancy tonight. Second. Are there any other amendments to the agenda before we move on?
Motion approved.
Agenda has approval, adding the appointment of the... All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So under 10 U business appointments, we will do the appointment of that. Mr. Pony, would you like to come to address us?
I would be honored to, yes, sir.
Get that for me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're a busy man, so we'll get you...
And so I just got to tell you, I left Mayor Steve Jones and he told me to express his condolences and such, and I left a filet mignon steak right there on. I said, "Mayor, I have to go. I'm going to be late to the county commission meeting." But this is going to be the best type meeting that I can have for you all because I'm here to actually ask for input for what you all want me to carry this year or what you're looking for this year at the Capitol. We're going in session in about seven weeks, so if there's private acts or if there's something that you want me to be looking at, I'd love to get that early so we can take it to our attorneys and such, so we're all on the same page of what it is that we're going to be doing. You know, I want to come see you all twice a year, once when session's over to kind of give you an update of what happened and once before we go in. And that's what I'm doing now, is I'm just saying if there's anything that y'all are looking for, what your direction is, so when I'm down at the Capitol, I'm representing you all. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll just open it up to any questions or comments.
One thing, Mr. Mark, we've been working on for the past year and you're very aware of, is that amateur reimbursement will be if you continue to...
We will absolutely be doing that.
We've made some progress, but you know, we just need to push that over.
Okay, all right. You know, I think if I take my key takeaways from what I'm trying to do in the county is Act of 258 is our top priority that I'm trying to fight for. Second thing is, is going to be jails, okay? I mean, how do we reduce the number of people that we're having to house on a regular basis? And how can we do this effectively where it's not costing as much and it's not being pushed on to the counties? And the third thing is healthcare. You know, we want the healthcare in rural counties. So those are kind of the top three things that we're looking at for our county right here. But with that, if there's any direction that you all have, I'm here to represent you and carry it down there. I'm here to be your voice.
Mark, what are you all, what are you looking to do on the jail and the criminal side? What's been talked about being done?
So, you know, right now, I think something was put to each of the counties where you'd actually have to pay 100% of the ankle bracelets, all right? However, we're trying to make that so instead of having people incarcerated at $50 some dollars a day or whatever the cost is for the county, that it would be cheaper at $100 per month to have those bracelets than it would be to do that. How do we keep people for their first offense from having to actually be housed if they're nonviolent offenders? Tennessee and the United States unfortunately is one of the highest incarceration rates in the nation, in the world, and Tennessee's one of the highest ones in the nation. So we want to find a way to address that problem. It's expensive for the counties, it's expensive for the state, and it's hard to get them back into society. So we find that all the studies are showing that sometimes the first time that somebody's put in jail, they actually learn how to be a better criminal than they are getting rehab or whatever. So we want to see what we can do to address that in a smart way, to keep people that are violent, to keep people that need to be put away. We want to do that. We don't want to let them out. But we sure want to find ways to have alternative programs or something for the counties where it's not as expensive. I will tell you that I actually got to meet with Paul Diggs again on 258. I know that it is a hot issue. I will tell you continuing resolutions, you know, that I know the county sent one on a fairly regular basis, but continuing to do that on a yearly basis does make a difference because we have that in front of us that we're trying to say, this is important to our people at the county. Any other questions? Yes?
Something I know is important to people in my district is internet access in many areas.
All right, now I will tell you that the governor, he is pushing for that. We have actually passed millions of dollars to do that and he wants to continue to do that on a relationship between the providers and the state to help provide that money. Unfortunately, it goes so short, you know, even though we put in $40 million, it didn't seem to make a dent into what we had. Smith County did get some of that money, but it's not enough. But we're going to continue to fund those programs.
Do you have a status update or a timeframe on 258?
All right, so the next thing that is, I'm sure you all seen what came out in the paper, the new proposal of what they are looking at. And I know Terry Lynn Weaver's pushing for a safety grant, money for that first stoplight. And that would be the first phase of that. Their money is available in the safety grant, and so we're pushing on that to at least get that phase done if we can. Because it's not in the Improve Act, it has got to just take us pushing hard to move that forward. And that's what we're going to do is we've got to do it in stages to take whatever money's available whenever we can to get it. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. My number, I do want to hear from you and talk to you if something comes up. I want to represent you. I want to represent you well at the Capitol. I am your voice there, and I want to make sure I'm speaking for you all when I'm down there, okay? Thank you so very much for allowing me to see you all.
Just a bit quick.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, so.
Sure.
What about the increase in only rate of the sliding much per day?
I'd love to tell you I have good news on that, but right now, I know they just did that a couple of years ago. I think it went from 35 to 37. There has not been a big push to do that again. They did try and help y'all's department with some of the services that you were providing, where you had to take people from like hospital down to different facilities. I think we tried, okay, but we're trying to re-help that funding, so it's not going to be all on the Sheriff's Department when we're doing that.
And what about the supplement pay for the officers? I know that gets addressed pretty much every year and it don't go anywhere.
Well, it did last year. It did increase, so we did actually increase that. So they got that increase, so...
A little bit, right?
$200. And so I think it was at 6, now it's at 800. So we actually gave a 25% increase. It had been stagnant for so many years. So I'm not saying 200...
States around us get so much more.
Yes. But we did try last year to at least get some things done for our officers that way.
Right, all right. Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes. All right, thank you all. I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
You'll make it your delight, man. Thank you, Mr. Mark. Thank you for what you do.
Thanks, sir.
All right, item number eight is County Mayor Report. I'll start off by saying, I was up there last night with the Ebbs fire and I got to watch all our EMS and fire departments and sheriff's departments and first responders, several different groups, several different departments work together and it was a cold and rainy and sleet night and wind blowing and fighting fires and they were looking for a body of a man that they'd all grown up and loved. I just want to say thank you to all you first responders, your EMS people, your sheriff's department. We don't pay, I know you don't do it for the money, but I thank you for what you do and we know many of you are for what you do. But I just want to say that thank you. It was a sad night, but I was impressed watching that work and I thank all of you for that. All right, moving on, website work. We are looking at some logos. We're working on our content, getting that going. We're hoping to have that rolling out sooner around the first of the year or better. If you've got any ideas on what you'd like to see on our county government website, please get with me and we'll talk about it. Our Barrett group, sales tax and review audit has started. She has got all her partner papers from the state, so they are working on that. The vacant property update, the plans went to the state this week for their approvals. Once that is done, that property will go, that project will go to bid. Once we get a true cost of what that's going to be, then it will make, then we'll know whether it makes sense for Tennessee Central to come in and be a partner if it's just way too much and we need to just push it back and wait a couple more years before we get in a better shape or somebody else or move that process onto another developer on that. So I would assume January would be the first that we would bring it here to if you were to get your approval going to that partnership with Tennessee Central if it looks like it's going to make sense. Some cost reductions that we have done. Our maintenance department has started looking at air conditioners and our heating and air when they go down. They've been able to do some research on the internet and go ahead and buy the parts and fix them and say, I think we're somewhere around $1,000 we've saved in service calls just by those gentlemen being able to find that part, get it ordered, get it repaired. So thanks to them. At Stanley Station 2, going over to Gornsville, we had a problem with the front door and some floors, so Mr. Terry went and got a quote to get that replaced and it was somewhere in $2,500, $3,000 range, Terry said, right? Terry, Jeff, and the maintenance department spent two days working on it. They bought materials. We got that fixed for $772, so we saved about $1,900 to $2,000 on that. So very proud of them for working through and finding solutions on that. Any other partner head or official has an update on something they've done to cut costs would be at this time, if you've got something, we'd be loved to hear it. But if not, anytime that you come across something like that, we're glad to let you, talk to you about what you're doing and can you do it to cut costs. So that's the end of my County Mayor Report. Ms. Daisy, financial reports.
On page 15 is the beginning of the cash flow analysis. Updated figures for the month of October. For each fund, that runs through page 10. Anybody have any questions about any of the cash flow?
On page 21 and 22 is a letter from the Comptroller's Office approving our budget for the 1920 year. You'll notice they do have comments about the budget that was passed. Does appear to have sufficient cash flow for us, fulfilling those basic requirements. They also mention about the highway fund, basically any fund that need, that has operating costs in it, so just the general fund or the highway fund, they liked, they would like to see those cash balances be to where basically what you're looking at is they want you to have three to four months worth of operating cash to work off of at the beginning of each year, so they won't see those cash balances increase and grow to sustain that. So then on page 23 is the beginning of the quarterly reports, quarterly financial statements, and the ones that I have run through page 32 for all the funds except for the schools. Lana, yeah, she didn't make it.
Did you get all of them?
Yes. There's, the schools are on page 33 through 36. Anybody have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them.
We'll move on to the committee reports. They'll go on there, Budget Finance, April, if you have any of that. That's right. We have your committee. We'll move on to another 10 U business acknowledgements. We don't have any. We'll move on to item B is the appointment. We do have the letter from Dr. Duke. Would you like to address the body before?
Yeah. It's okay, I stand here. I think everybody here probably knows me. I've been around for these parties. I don't know why, I'm just about set for military and education. I just, I just, I'm submitting myself for this appointment because I feel like that I could probably bring something to the table for the group. I know that the county's having a little bit of a hard time now and I feel like I'd like to be a part of having, get this, get this train back on track, as it were. I think the world of the county and the city, this is my county, my city, and I've always wanted to volunteer and do things that I, anything that I could to help and hopefully I could be something that would, I would be an asset to the group, I hope. So I'm not a politician. I've had quite a bit of experience in business and a lot of, a lot of the things we do now with the Fairmont Group, we do a lot of federal regulations and that sort of thing. So I'm kind of used to government work and that sort of thing. I know it's different with the county and is with federal and state statutes that we deal with regularly in my other job. I'm still physician, I just don't practice medicine. I do help multiple scruples and so I stumble some and my speech is a little slower sometimes, but hopefully my brain is still working like it's supposed to. And so if you feel that I would be qualified and could be of help, I'd be happy to serve.
Is there any questions?
Anybody have any questions? From anything?
I do have, I have some questions.
Sure.
How long have you lived in District 6?
I've lived in District 6 for 28, 28 years.
Have you spoken to just some constituents in your district and do you have an idea of what some of their concerns may be?
I do. I practiced medicine here for 20 years, so I've pretty well seen just about everybody here. I'm mostly on the, I'm on the city council, not on the city council, I'm on Board of Zoning Appeals, I'm Vice Chair of Board of Zoning Appeals and Chairman of Board of Zoning Appeals and Vice Chairman of the Plan Commission. So I've, yeah, I've regularly talked to people in the city. I don't, I don't know that I do it formally, but I pretty well know everybody and talk to everybody that's in the city.
So you have, being on the zoning board, you have kind of idea of like legislative bodies, how they work and processes?
I do, yeah. I've actually, yeah, I do.
Are you or any immediate family members county employees?
No.
Do you intend to run for the seat in the next regular election as well?
I don't know. As I said, I'm not a politician. I just, you know, I want to serve, but I don't know that I can answer that question here.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Feel free to ask. Well, if you want to know what you're getting, if you're getting.
Thank you, Dr. Duke. Anyone else like to address that would be likely to be considered for nomination tonight?
My name's Steve Babcock. I work for the sheriff's office. I've been there about 90 years and I'll answer your questions up front. I lived in the district for about seven months. I moved recently from the Brush Creek area. I have talked to my neighbors and work with the sheriff's office. I talk to people every day. And the reason I want to do this is I want to get, I like to help people. That's why I do what I do and I think I make a difference and pull everybody together and work together as a team and make this thing work. That's what I've got.
Anyone else would like to address to be considered for nomination?
Good. Asking questions, yeah. So do you have a good understanding of legislative bodies and how the processes work?
Probably not as physician. I've got fair and dandy.
Are you or any immediate family members county employees?
Yes, I am.
And you work for?
Work for the sheriff's office.
Sheriff's office. Have you spoken to constituents in your district and have an idea of what their concerns might be?
Yes, I have.
And do you intend to run for the seat at the next regular election?
I do.
Steve. Anyone else would like to address and be considered for nomination tonight? If not, I will take nominations from the floor.
I'd like a motion to nominate Dr. Duke.
All right, Dr. Duke has been nominated. Any other nominations?
I'll make a nomination, nominate Steven Babcock.
All right, we have. Any other nominations? Regular roll call.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I request that District 6 votes first, since it's our district.
All right. We move District 6 first.
Charles Kent.
Steven Babcock.
Bill Reese.
Dr. Duke.
Shannon Green.
Mr. Babcock.
Lynn Reese.
Mr. Babcock.
Terry Givens.
Babcock.
Billy Bass.
Dr. Duke.
Credit Kirby.
Dr. Duke.
Jason Stewart.
Mr. Babcock.
Jimmy Waitfree.
Dr. Duke.
Daniel Creutz.
Duke.
Don Pascal.
Dr. Duke.
Shannon Minchi.
Mr. Babcock.
Erica Eagle.
Dr. Duke.
Ron Sheenak.
Dr. Duke.
Ron Cowan.
Dr. Duke.
Linda Nixon.
Steve Babcock.
Toby McKinney.
Babcock.
Tommy Bannen.
Dr. Duke.
Joey Nixon.
Dr. Duke.
Dennis Hackett.
Dr. Duke.
Frank Woodard.
Dr. Duke.
Okay. The results are 13th for Dr. Roger Duke and 8th for Mr. Steven Babcock. Dr. Duke is hereby appointed to fill the position of Mrs. Public Council. We thank you both for being interested in this position and welcome aboard, Dr. Duke. All right, so we have that. We'll move on to item C, the approvals. These are just our cash management policy and our fund out policy. They go along with resolutions passed in August. They are just our policies on paper. Is there any questions on those?
Can we get policies like that put on our website?
That will, yeah, that will. That will, that's my intention, is to have all our policies and our person policies on our, our handbook, all that stuff will be on that website. Autographs, financial reports, all, everybody who's here tonight will be over there. So yes, that is part of that board. If not, if any more discussion questions, I would take a motion for the approval of those two items.
Motion to approve.
Second, any other discussion? Alright, motion approved. Any other discussion?
Please.
Wrong. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Alright, so we'll move on to our resolutions. Item number one, two, and so resolutions overall, two, three are, are just our first amendments that came out of the budget finance. We have those reviewed, those. I would take, do you want to combine those or vote on separately?
I'd like to vote on them separately.
There's no, just money moving within budgets. Correct. I have a motion to, to vote on separately. Second. Is there a second? Or motion to combine?
Motion to combine.
Now, second to that?
Second.
So I have a motion and a second to combine. All those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you.
Alright, so now we will, I will take a motion to approve these resolutions.
Motion to approve.
Terry Gibbons has got a motion to approve. Second. I have a motion and a second to approve these two, three resolutions. Any questions or discussion? Dalton, we'll do a roll call. Stacy.
Shannon Green.
Yes.
Lynn Reese.
Yes.
Terry Gibbons.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Credit Kirby.
Yes.
Jason Stewart.
Yes.
Jimmy Wafer.
Yes.
Daniel Kricks.
Yes.
Dalton High School.
Yes.
Shannon Minchi.
Yes.
Erica Abel.
Yes.
Ron Schumay.
Yes.
Ron Cowan.
Yes.
Linda Nixon.
Yes.
Toby McKinney.
Yes.
Charles Kent.
Yes.
Bill Reese.
Yes.
Tommy Vine.
Yes.
Joey Nixon.
Yes.
Dennis Hackett.
Yes.
Frank Woodard.
Item number four is a resolution of eleven, two thousand nineteen oh four. It is an intergovernmental transfer from solid waste to highway department. That is reviewing the fourth flatbed property that we live, keep on the living room from the landfill to the highway department. Stages on use for a truck when it touches trees to clean up those downed sections.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve. Motion to second. I have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passed. Resolution number five is the appointment of the Board of Zoning Appeals. It's a slave of board members for the next term. Take a motion to approve those.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve those. All those, any, any questions or discussion? If not, all those approved, all those approved?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution. Alright, item number six is the sales tax referendum. Do you give a handout on yet? Is another way of putting something on the referendum in March for the citizens to vote for. This one will go also as well as to a reduction in property tax. This one is a little bit harder to put a number on because that number fluctuates so much. Right now, we got, I mean, we can give you what we got last year, but since we don't have a three-quarter on this year, it's hard to predict what I'll have there. But.
It was around ten or eleven cents.
Yeah, it's another ten or eleven cents is what we're thinking on that one. Again, all this, this is not just to put another tax on, this is to reduce the property tax rate with this.
Now, this doesn't, somebody brought it up at the budget meeting that our estimates don't represent the online.
No.
Sales tax. So that could be.
It could be modeled after. Well, we want, all indications, we're probably, we're probably a year, year and a half from really seeing what that internet sales is gonna do.
But this would, I mean.
Yeah, it would, it would increase that as well. It would increase our revenues from that, from online sales.
I've got a budget finance that are paying pretty sales taxes in parties and board and all that.
Maybe wrong. I can't remember who brought that up, but it was a good point.
Yeah, if you're buying goods and services in parties or in stores right now, you're already paying that three-quarter cents.
Mr. Bell, I have a question. You talked to Jeff Bensker, you mentioned.
Jeff Bensker, his assistant, well, we worked together to put this forth, and it's, obviously it's a little simpler format than what we've seen in times past. It's just a up or down, basically, or against, is all it amounts to.
Is the same tax represented?
Yes, yes.
He's once helped us in the past, so I would just wanna get it up there.
He's a genius when it comes to sales tax and use tax, so.
Absolutely.
I would take a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Motion. I have a first and a second. Any, any other questions or discussion? Alright, we'll do the roll call. Stacy.
Shannon Green.
Yes.
Lynn Reese.
Yes.
Terry Gibbons.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Credit Kirby.
Yes.
Jason Stewart.
Yes.
Jimmy Wafer.
Yes.
Daniel Kricks.
Yes.
Dalton High School.
Yes.
Shannon Minchi.
Yes.
Erica Abel.
Yes.
Ron Schumay.
Yes.
Ron Cowan.
Yes.
Linda Nixon.
Yes.
Toby McKinney.
Yes.
Charles Kent.
Yes.
Bill Reese.
Yes.
Tommy Vine.
Yes.
Joey Nixon.
Yes.
Dennis Hackett.
Yes.
Frank Woodard.
Yes.
Resolution passed. We can ask. Alright, we'll go to item E is a list of nuggets. I would take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Tommy in a second. I have a motion and a second to approve the list of nuggets. Any questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, next. Number eleven is other businesses. It's just a trustee CD bid opening. There's no action from the management base for your information. Take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Take a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second for adjournment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's it all.